The celebrant hasn't appeared yet. You guys ready? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Winnetka Village Council's special study session for January 31st, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First order of business is I'm going to ask everybody in the room to please mute your cell phones. And I'll go ahead and ask our village manager to do a roll call for attendance.
Trustee Apitoff.
Here.
Trustee Kreip.
Here.
Trustee Handler.
Here.
Trustee Dearborn.
Here.
Trustee Swerk.
Here.
Trustee Dahlman.
Here.
President Rins.
Here. Okay, item two is public comment. This is the time of the evening when anyone who would like to speak on an item which is not on the agenda, which means if you're here for the lakefront conversation, you'll have your chance to speak later, but this is for anybody who's here to speak on items other than... And we're going to be instituting a three-minute rule tonight, as much as I abhor that, but with a large room and a lot of work to do, we have to really be responsible with our comments. So Ted, your microphone is yours.
So Ted Winachanko, yes, so this whole thing has got me thinking about the lakefront in general, not on the rules, but I've heard all the talks about not being arbitrary in terms of what we do, and I agree. It's high time that the village stopped being arbitrary about what it does. So, the village owns the ravine at Sheridan, Tower Road with the coal chute overlook, Spruce, Elm, Oak, Cherry, and Willow. And those are all public roads, 66 feet wide, except Sheridan, which is 100, and Cherry, which is only 41 at the lake shore. And all of those are public beaches. They've all been, over the years, closed to the public. So, we're not being arbitrary, and we're trying to enforce the owners', the property owners' rights. Then the village needs to assert its rights as a property owner for all these village-owned beaches, okay? The owners along budding these streets, in multiple instances, have seized public land. They've encroached into the streets. They've built fences out into the street, basketball nets, driveways, flagpoles, retaining walls. It's, the streets have been narrowed into private driveways, getting rid of public parking. The village also has an arbitrary rule that you can't have public parking east of Sheridan, although the number of tickets the police enshoo are incredibly small, likely because the only people that complain about cars parked there are people that live there, and they don't complain about their own cars being parked illegally on the streets. And so I think it's high time that the village step forward. You're right, it shouldn't be arbitrary. The village should treat all these things the same. The streets east of Sheridan are the same as the streets west of Sheridan. The village has property rights. They should assert them. They should reopen the beaches that they've closed over the years and give the public more access to the lake shore. So, it's glad, I'm glad that we're talking about this. I don't think we should be arbitrary to one party or another, and that includes the village. The village needs to step up and assert its own rights and reopen things for the whole public.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll...
That's quick. So, is it not on the agenda?
If it's about the lakefront, then we have to wait.
My item was not really great.
It's okay, Ted. It's okay. No, it's, no, because it isn't, you're right, we're talking about lakefront regulations and things of that nature, so we're good. Okay, so, the next order of business is, "Lakefront regulation discussions continued." Council will continue discussing matters regarding existing zoning, development, and engineering regulations related to the lakefront properties. Okay, for those of you that weren't here for the last meeting, I'm considering this a continuation of where we left off the last time around, a couple weeks ago. We heard from a myriad of professionals who deal with, with the lakefront regulations and the like, the Army Corps, IDNR, our staff, and others. We also had a lengthy public comment session that, that evening. So tonight, what we're going to do, if you, those of you who are here remember, is we didn't have a chance to talk amongst ourselves, and ultimately, it has to come to this table for us to deliberate and discuss and debate and throw ideas on the table and see what flies and what doesn't, if anything. So, that's where we're, we're going to go this evening. One of our trustees, trustee Kreip, has put a lot of time and thought into examining our existing regulations, and I would like to give him the opportunity to talk about that. We'll bat those ideas around. There's been a lot of, I, there's been a lot of chatter regarding potential moratoriums, so we're going to get that out on the table tonight and talk about that the same way. Then we'll go into just additional thoughts and ideas on whether we're going anywhere or not. Then we'll open it up for public comment, and I, again, I would like to be out of here, folks, at 9:30, because meetings that run more than two hours are useless. I'll add another 30 on it. I think the last one, we went to 10. And it's just too much for an evening when there's a lot of people here who work during the day and are out here on, on what's usually family time or personal time. And I really appreciate to see a full room, because this is an important subject and one that we want the community involved with. So, with that said, our first order of business is I'd like to turn it over to trustee Kreip, who has shared some, has some ideas on, on where our existing ordinances may or may not help us think about what we might do. That'd be fine. Can you do that? Who's got the button? Oh, okay. There she goes.
I'll turn up the volume, but also if you can put the microphone a little closer to your face, that'll help as well.
Yeah. I don't know who was talking in this thing before, so I'm not sure how close I want it. All right, Andy, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Chris. And thanks, everybody, for showing up. So, in eight years, this is the first time I've asked to present slides. Normally, I hate slides, but there's a lot of material to cover. I wanted this to be out there for everybody to see, so we could be very clear about the current state. In the discussion last time, we heard a lot of concerns by homeowners, by people that use the beach, and, and then probably each trustee separately has, has had a lot of people chew on their ears, like, "You should do this," or "You should do that." And, and I appreciate all the passion and energy that goes into those discussions, but what I like to do, to some extent, when we're able, is kind of take a step back and first think about what are the issue, what is it we're trying to solve for? What is the current state? What is really necessary, and what's good policy? And when I think about what good policy is, a good policy is one that also doesn't make bad neighbors, all right? So we need to respect the rights of homeowners to use and enjoy their property. At the same time, we need to respect the health and safety and welfare of the public using the lakefront. That's a big deal. For those of you that don't come to all of our meetings, we have meetings where we recognize our firefighters and our paramedics for scooping people out of freezing water. It's a big deal, so it's an important issue. So, what I wanted to do is, after reading Peter's excellent memo, I wanted to sort of take a step back and ask, "What is currently in our village code?" Right? And frankly, you know, what has triggered this debate is a discussion about a potential change, a change in what, you know, we could consider the status quo to be. And sometimes, as a legislative body, what you find is that you have legislation, it's a lot broader maybe than what you'd like, right? Because you can't contemplate every single thing that might happen in the future. Like, we don't have any zoning rules about spaceships. So, if there's an alien invasion tomorrow, you know, we're kind of S.O.L. when it comes to our zoning code, but that doesn't mean we can't address it, that we don't have something there. So, I wanted to kind of take this time to go through that with you. Peter's memo really focused on a lot of the questions that we asked, which were around, "If we want to get into this business of exercising jurisdiction concurrent with what the Army Corps or the Illinois Department of Natural Resources does, what would that look like?" Right? And, and he made it very clear, we don't have specific regulations currently that says, "Here's how we're going to apply standards versus the standards applied by the Army Corps or the IDNR." Okay? And that, and that's pretty clear. But when you look at the code, one thing that you do find, and it's actually sort of surprising, maybe we shouldn't be surprised, because smart people have lived in this village for quite a while, right? And they've been living by a big body of water, and it hasn't gone unnoticed. So the fact that we may not remember it any moment in time doesn't mean that it's not there. It's like Prego, it's in there. So, when you look at our code, you see in multiple places broad protections for health, safety, and welfare, including specific regulations dealing with impermeable surfaces, fences, plants, structures, and other things on private property that affect public property or just on private property, things on public property, things projecting into public property. And our code requirements, they don't end at the lakefront. We heard that last two weeks ago, whatever, from our lawyers and everyone else, that the village authority goes well out into the lakes. When we say "within the village," that does not end at the waterfront, in some point out there, and guess what? Our code contemplates that. So, I want to just briefly touch on some of these things, and when I do that, I want you to think about things conceptually, at least I do, and to the extent it helps you understand where I'm coming from. I think about things in two buckets, and, and two buckets of shoreline projects. We have shoreline protection projects or recreation projects that are more or less consistent with what we've seen in the village to date. And some people might have some qualms with those things or not, fine. That's one discussion, though, about the status quo. But then we have what I think prompted this discussion, and frankly, it's prompted what could only be described as mass community anxiety, right? The possibility of a material departure from what we've known as the status quo. And, you know, so the picture at the top, hopefully, I'm not singling anybody's property out. I'm, I'm an avid lake walker. When I went into my photo stream, I had 1,700 photos of the Winnetka Lakefront. So, hopefully, I'm not picking on anybody. The first project is basically status quo. You can see down the waterline that's from a public beach. If someone is drowning, you can see them, hopefully hear them, and you can go rescue them. Sightlines aren't blocked, access isn't blocked, egress isn't blocked. If, God forbid, there was a mass shooting, you could escape, okay? And we got to be thinking about these things unless we want to be completely stupid. The, the bottom picture is what got people a little upset, and we've seen different versions of this. I don't know if it's what version or whatever it is, but you, you can't see, you can't access, you can't egress. So it creates some concerns that really got people concerned. Now, I want to say, we've, we're currently informed that that bottom picture is not on the agenda, okay? And, but if something like that were on the agenda, the question then is, what is in our code that would enable us to address that? Okay? And so when I think about this, then, I'm really thinking about health, welfare, and safety, okay? Not aesthetics, not like, you know, minding what other people do on their property, but really basic things that clearly fall within what we do here at the village. And by the way, we've enforced these, these things I'm going to be talking about. This isn't like some random thing that's been buried in our books. Actually, Ted, did Ted leave? You know, I was going to give him a positive comment for once in his life, and he left the meeting. Ted pointed out that we had a situation where we picked on, in his words, "A homeowner who had built a garden in a parkway." Well, the provisions, we weren't picking on them. We were trying to engage constructively, because we were concerned that it might create some issues for health, safety, welfare, access, egress, all those sorts of things. This isn't like some random thing. These are things we've enforced. You may have heard there was an incident. Warren, I don't mean to call you out, there was a little fence that went up, and now it's down. That's because we already regulate this stuff, okay? So, let's just talk about the, the sections. If you're really bored, you should read these, they're amazing. Title 8, Health and Safety. Title 9, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare. Title 12, Streets, Sidewalk, Public Places. And Title 15, Buildings and Construction. We'll start with Title 15. This is our building code. To the extent anyone thinks that we do not currently require permits for what goes into the lake, this is where you can find out that that is not correct. When you submit a permit, and this has actually roughly been the practice, people submit the permit to IDNR and to Army Corps, and we review it in tandem with it. Is that more or less fair, Rob?
We receive, we receive a copy when that happens.
Right, and so we have eyes on it.
Because some of the project will extend it landward.
Right. So if you read 15.04.020, it broadly states that the minimum requirement for construction activities in all matters affecting or relating to buildings, structures, site work, yada, 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 including engineering, are, that occur within the village, fall within our building code, okay? The title is intended to ensure, here are the magic words, "Public Safety, Health, and Welfare, insofar as they affect, are affected by the design, construction, alteration, addition, repair, removal, demolition, location, occupancy, and maintenance of all building structures and property within the village." Practical way I think about this is, I live on the corner of Elm and Maple, right? That's my private property. But if you see my fence, which we decorate the heck out of, so a lot of people will see it, it's angled. The reason it's angled is because we can't block sightlines, for, otherwise, we'll have a lot of car accidents there. So this is authority that we regularly exercise, it's well within the scope of what we do. Things happening in the lake are subject to our building code. All right. The next question, and this was in that scary image that got people angry, upset. Hopefully, we'll get over that at some point. Fences. "No person shall install, erect, construct, or replace any fence or wall within the village without first obtaining a permit from the director." Okay? That's just, you got to do it. Doesn't matter how far into the lake it goes or where it's, we're already looking at that. That's why my fence is angled. That's why a lot of fences in town are angled. That's why we're already doing this. So, why would the lakefront be any different? It really isn't in our code. There's no distinction. Impermeable surfaces. By definition, things that are going to be blocking water are probably somewhat impermeable, okay? A permit is required for impermeable surfaces under 15.44.040. "No person shall construct any impermeable surface as defined in the code without first obtaining a permit from the director." And why? What's the permit going to be doing? Well, it's going to be ensuring that it doesn't impair public health, safety, and welfare along the waterfront, okay? So, safe and sanitary conditions. If you have a structure that's in the lake, we already have something that says you need to maintain it in a way that it's in good repair, structural soundness, and it's safe, sanitary, and does not pose a threat to the public health, safety, or welfare. There it is again, right? So, if you build something, you need to build it in a way that accommodates public health, safety, and welfare. You need to apply for a permit, and you need to maintain it in that sort of way. So we already have this authority, we're already exercising this authority. If my fence were to fall down onto Elm Street, I would probably get a nice note from our Director of Engineering, say, you know, "Could you get that, you know, pick that up? That, that happened." Trees and shrubs. The trees were a concern, and is Chuck here? Doubting? Yeah? Okay, Chuck pointed out that the planter pockets create some issues, and I'll talk about that, but there were some concerns about having trees that block the waterfront or that involve putting fill out into the lake, and that fill introducing, and we're not talking about the rocks that are saving our shoreline. And by the way, for those of you that are paying for those shoreline protections, thank you, because there is a fox that lives in my backyard. He dug up a hole, and it's about this high, and it's full of beach sand. And, and if you weren't protecting your shoreline, my house might be going into the water. So you're, you're doing that at your expense and for our benefit. But if you were to put trees out there, that would be likely to fall across any street, parkway, or public place, which includes the water, right? Anything above the shoreline, that would be a problem. That's not allowed currently. "It's also unlawful for any person to plant, place, or maintain any tree or shrub such that is located or grows in a manner as to extend over or into any street, parkway, or public place." All right. This is exciting. And we're going to move on from Title 8. All right, what do we got? Oh, yeah, this one is great. Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare. I thought there was going to be like way more interesting stuff here than it turns out we actually had. 9.16.010, Public Nuisances Prohibited. And I don't want to suggest anyone's a public nuisance. "No person shall erect, contrive, cause, continue, maintain, or permit to exist any public nuisance in the village or within the police jurisdiction of the village." Again, we've established that village's jurisdiction goes way out into the water. What is a public nuisance? "Public nuisance is a thing, an act, an occupation, a condition, or use of property which shall continue for such length of time as to substantially annoy, injure, or endanger the comfort, health, repose, or safety of the public." You'll see there's other things here that are relevant, including number four, "Unlawfully or substantially interfere with, obstruct, or tend to obstruct, or render dangerous for passage any street, alley, highway, navigable body of water, or other public way." This wasn't written in a vacuum, Lake Michigan isn't new, this is specifically referring to that. "It also prohibits the pollution of any public well, cistern, stream, lake, which we only have one, canal, body of water, sewage, industrial waste, with, with any substances." Okay? So Chuck raised that issue, I thought that was a thoughtful issue. Our code addresses it. Streets, sidewalks, and public places. You wouldn't think that would have stuff relevant to the lake, it does. For, one of the issues that's come up is, you know, there's concern about who controls, like, what utilities are going where? Can people just run anything anywhere they want? The answer is no. First of all, they need a permit from us, and the permit authorizing the activity will be reviewed by our Director of Engineering to make sure, guess what? It's protecting public health, safety, and welfare. Also, any utilities that are village utilities, guess who controls them? The people sitting here. So, we're not going to put a sewage pipe into the lake unless we think it's the responsible thing to do, and if we do put it into the lake, and it's not the responsible thing to do, it's not Warren's fault. Is Warren here? I've used your name in vain three times now, Warren, I'm sorry. It's not Warren's fault, it's, it's our fault. And on that note, I just want to point out, there's been a lot of concern about the, the stormwater pipes. Let there be no doubt, they're dumping crap into the lake right now. The status quo is, it's running off the streets through our pipes. We haven't fixed it yet. It's on our to-do list. So, it wouldn't be a matter of, do you move the pipe here or there? We are currently not being responsible enough in, in our stormwater runoff. We have a massive stormwater project that's making your cars very dirty now when you go through the west side of town. We're fixing it over there. We'll get to this, but I do want that to not be lost on people, because there's been a lot of concern about what we're dumping into the lake. We are responsible for it, we need to do better, but frankly, it's, it's a bit of a separate issue. I think it's gotten stirred up by this current thing, and it's good, because normally, this room is empty and we're very lonely. All right. So what do we do if we have a problem in any of these areas? Do we have something in the code that would allow us to address or eliminate nuisances? We do. We have a process, and this is what I would call a very Winnetka process. We don't send a SWAT team, we don't arrest people, we have conversations. Sometimes we have an insane number of conversations, and we've, we've, we've all experienced that in our time. We don't want to be a police state, and there have been a lot of people that are trying to dare us or tempt us in litigation, which I think is kind of funny, because I've been a lawyer for 25 years, and I know how stupid that is as an endeavor, right? But, yeah, we're not going to do that. We're going to keep doing it in the Winnetka way, which is we engage people constructively, collaboratively, openly. A lot of times, that works. Sometimes it doesn't, and then, then we'll do it more the Chicago way, but that's, we have that ability. It's, it's in the code. So, and, and, and if, if that doesn't work out, we can like remove stuff and charge it back to people. So, we're, we're not toothless. Winnetka's existing village code already provides a process for implementing additional rules or standards. So, one of the points that I thought Peter's memo did a really good job of is pointing out, we don't have the specifics on this issue, because we haven't frankly dealt with it before. Wouldn't it be nice if our code contemplated that? It does, right here. "In 12.04.140, the Director of Public Works shall be authorized to promulgate such standards, rules, and regulations for any work, blah, blah, blah." We can address public health, safety, we can get more specific, we have a way of doing that in our existing code, and of course, we can add to the code, but we can also adopt standards without even adopting new ordinances, because it all falls under the bucket. Just because we haven't seen a specific thing before, doesn't mean you can do it, right? We all have to use some common sense, and so I think that ought to be an area of focus for us in our discussion. Last kind of thing, and this is really, I had to like go back and forth on this one a number of times before I figured it out. What if the village has more onerous standards than IDNR, the Army Corps, the, we got a lot of regulatory, the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, right? The MWRD? What if we're more rigorous? How do we deal with that? Do we have a variance process? We do. Right? So there's already a variance process, and actually, the standards are sort of handy. So if you're thinking about, like, what's happening in the lakefront now, the status quo, and do I want to do something that's different from the status quo? You should probably take a look at this to ask yourself, "Do I have a basis for asking for a variance?" Right? And, and the standards are, are pretty decent. "No variances shall be granted unless the applicant demonstrates that the following criteria have been met." One of the key things is that the relief requested is the minimum necessary, and I think that's a fair ask. If you're going to create a shoreline protection project or a project that enables you to use your property for recreation, good, God bless you, that's great, but it should be the minimum necessary. You don't go over the top, right? We don't want to see mountains piled up, right? The minimum necessary. That's already there. It's already in the code. It's part of the variance standard. So if you want to go over that, you just, you need to ask, and then you need to explain why you're going to do that, and you also have to show, guess what? "There will be no additional threat to public health, safety, or welfare." Now, getting to that point about our firefighters and our paramedics, we contemplate that as well. "There will be no additional public expense for flood protection, rescue, or relief operations, policing, or repairs to roads, utilities, or other public facilities." It's a big deal. Forty-three people drowned in Lake Michigan last year, okay? So, it's a big deal. We're not going to take it lightly, we take it very seriously. All right, so last thing I'll say is this. Everyone wants to get us suing each other, and everyone's kind, we're not going to do that. We're going to profoundly disappoint anyone who thinks that we're going to act like a public interest research group and use taxpayer dollars, which we're taking a lot of, to engage in pointless litigation. It's not necessary. We already have the tools in the tool shed. We need to do a better job. I think we need to provide some more specific guidance, so people aren't guessing, right? But when you deal with a new situation, I think the best way to do it is to constructively engage people, and the indications I think we've had, and again, I'll use Warren's name, not in vain, the partners that we're working with have absolutely emphasized to us that that is what they want. They want to work with us in a collaborative way on these issues, and you can say, "Well, do you just trust them?" No, I'm a lawyer. So, no, that's why I just walked you through. That's why I just walked you through all the sections of our code that says no, but we're going to do it the Winneka way first. And that's all I had to say.
Great. Thanks, Andy. And I think the, great presentation, by the way. Thank you. The one thing that really helped me understand this was the last meeting, because up until the time we sat down here two weeks ago, I had no idea that our corporate limits, the village, actually extends a full half mile out into the water. So, a lot of the codes and regulations that we have apply because our corporate limits are already out there. Up until that meeting, you know, the, I guess the standard answer was, you know, our jurisdiction ends at the water's edge. And it was one of those common beliefs, commonly held beliefs, that everything stops at the water. Well, it turns out that in our charter, which is unique in the state, and I think there's only a few others, if I remember in the memo, that actually do reach out into the lake and claim that as part of the village. So, that's the, to me, that's the elegance of Andy's thinking on this, is because now all of a sudden, all these codes that we already have in place actually reach beyond the shore's edge.
And I suspect that, you know, institutional memories can be short, but the code was written by people that probably had some recollection of that.
Sure, because they refer to it. But, so, interesting idea, and I think that can summarize your bottom line, is we got a lot of what we need here already.
Yeah.
For those that are concerned about this.
Yeah.
So, I'll open it up to you guys, and love to hear your thoughts on it, too. And don't be afraid to cross-talk. We're here to have a conversation, not pontificate and, so, go ahead. Anybody who wants to talk, feel free.
I'll just start quickly.
Lead it off, John.
Great. Thanks for doing it, Andy. It was really informative. Our last, where we left off the last session, all those people that presented to us, I learned a lot in the whole process of all the rules in place already and the process to go through. It was great. And as far as the existing code that you pointed out today, all the items in here probably have been put in over time, because something caused those things to be put in, and just over time carried through, one at a time, more at a time. So, it's really, there's a lot of information in here, a lot of information already that we need to follow. So, that's.
Other thoughts? Do you like our code? Do you not like our code? Is it enough? Is it not enough?
Well, I guess I'll step in with some thoughts here. And Andy, thank you very much. You know, there has been a lot of talk over the past couple of weeks on this, phone calls and passion, and I completely understand it. And I've sort of broken this down into my mind, Lakeward and Landward. And we're talking Lakeward at the moment here. Landward has its own zoning issues. And the last meeting, what struck me and kind of left me a little discouraged was that there were clear gaps in our process here. The Army Corps and the IDNR, they flatly, flat-out said that they only deal with issues that go into the water. They don't follow up with oversight of projects. And frankly, I don't know, Rob, we get the permits, you know, and I don't know that we follow up on the process. I mean, maybe we do on develop, on projects that are down at the lake, but I just felt, I walked away feeling like there's a gap here, and all along, and I think that we've had a lot of issues here that have conflated. In my mind, again, this is not about any one project, any one property. This is a gap that we owe it to future councils to sort of get the process right. I mean, that's what we're talking about. And it seems to me that, Andy, what you're saying to me, I think, is that the construct is there.
Yep.
We need to fill in a little bit.
Yeah.
Specifics, you know, that aren't onerous, that make sense, that are sensible, minimum standards, whatever you want to call it. And I don't think we're going to upset the apple cart too. I mean, I never, I've never felt that.
Yeah.
Along the way here.
And I agree 100% with what you're saying. And in fact, I think, again, our friends at the Park District, maybe some homeowners have suffered from us not having sort of thought through something we hadn't really encountered before and come up with a process. But you remember the one Winneka saga we've all seen, right? We did some lessons learned after that, and one of the things we realized is we've got these somewhat arcane codes. Yes, they have what we want, but the problem is that if people aren't engaged early on, right? They need guidance. Practically, most people, you buy a property here, you want to be a good neighbor, and to have a process where you can just kind of get some input and get some really specific guidance, so you're not guessing, and you're not left in a situation where I feel that some of our friends, the Park District and others, have been in, which is sort of like, well, we're not 100% sure, and everyone's sort of mad at them, and we could probably do a better job of being proactive. And that doesn't mean saying yes or no. That's not, that's not actually what we do here. That's actually not proved effective at all. When you say no in Winneka, people start suing you. So, what you do is you engage super smart people, and you have intelligent conversations, and that's why we came up with the concept review process, which was if you're a developer and you have a big vision, and you know you got to run it through all the gauntlet that is our process, you come to the elected officials first, you present it at a high level, and you get some feedback. You get to ask some questions, and you get really, you know, that's maybe not a great idea, have you thought about this? So, you're not spending a lot of time and money, you're not guessing, the torches and the pitchforks don't come out so much, right? Because you end up with a plan that's sort of vetted, and everyone's like, yeah. And then the public can show up, right? And instead of like having to go on that dumpsterfirenextdoor.com, or whatever the hell that is, you know, you can, you can show up and you can say, here is what I'm thinking, right? And here's my concern. And so, that, something like that could help too with big projects, but I agree with you that there's a gap.
There's a little gap here, and, and again, my thought all along was, and I, again, I appreciate the passion here, but my thought was for the lakefront owners, that in some way, we would be putting up guardrails for their protection potentially. I mean, we don't know what's going to occur, the UFO idea. We don't know what's going to occur down there in the future. And if I was a lakefront owner, I wouldn't want a president or future neighbors to do something that would, that the village could not oversee, that the village could not permit properly. And so, I just, it just seemed to me like there was a wide opening, a gap that needs to be filled here for the future, maybe some for the present, but really looking ahead, being anticipatory instead of reactionary here. And so, it's good to see that we have the basic construct, and I just feel like we need to fill in some of the specifics. That's.
And that was what Peter recommended, too.
Yeah.
And maybe on your question, you know, you get the permit, IDNR, you get the Army Corps, a homeowner, right? Maybe David can answer this. Once you get those permits, you're worried about the oversight. Do they do like an as-built-for-completion-be-proper before you give them your occupancy permit? I mean, is that part of the permit process? Is there any kind of a?
Do they have to provide an as-built to us after the project is?
Yes. Okay, so there's your oversight. So, they got the permit approved, they got the drawings, they constructed properly, they sign off, and then we sign off. It make it make sense. And as far as going half a mile into the lake, almost look at that as if you're, forget the lake was there, your front yard on a street, that's the public property that we're protecting as the village. So, now you're protecting their land going towards the water, and then the street, in theory, is kind of an extra half a mile. It's just a way to look at that.
It's a public way.
Yeah, exactly. Right? Right.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, thank, I agree with what everybody has said so far. I mean, one of my big takeaways from last meeting is that our process, to Bob's point, is a little sideways instead of, I'll say, almost a neater pyramid that I think would be more understandable to most people, that the IDNR, the Army Corps of Engineers, their expertise is valuable, but that's just a piece of information that we gather versus one or the other of them being the final say on any project that has to do with the lakefront. And so, I think, as we've all sort of said, the pieces are all there. We need to tighten this up so it's very clear to homeowners, it's very clear to us, it's very clear to staff, what the process will be to approve something that happens on the lakefront. And just to the one point, I think I had pulled out last time that our code does define the lakefront as a street.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's very, it's very specifically defined in the code that it's defined as a street. So, there you go.
And what you're saying maybe is all we need to do is create a little flow chart of, hey, if you're contemplating doing something on the lakefront, here's a flow chart as an example to follow to know what you're up against. Because on the other hand, we're looking for more reviews and approvals. A lot of homeowners are going to say, oh, my God, that's a lot to do.
It's just pulling them in in a logical fashion.
Right. So, but to have that upfront, say, see it at least, rather than do something and ask for forgiveness later, which happens a lot also. Not here, but in other places.
And in some ways, it seems like, you know, we have a process similar to this for our commercial business districts, where if people want to do something that they're building, you know, that something's visible to the public, we issue a certificate of appropriateness, right? And it's reviewed by, you know, respected people in the community who understand design, and we've given them broad guidelines to work with, and they've actually come back and revised them just recently with us. And then they use those guidelines in looking at and analyzing these sorts of issues. And it seems to me that, you know, that sort of a process would probably be somewhat appropriate for the sort of things that we're talking about here.
But maybe a little more difficult because of all the engineering technicalities behind it. It's not just a visual appearance issue.
Right.
Or a written 25-foot variance or a setback. There's so much engineering involved.
I think an easy starting point is if you look up and down the lake, and what you're contemplating would be remarkable in comparison to what's up and down the lake, you need guidance. If it's unremarkable.
Then maybe not so much. But at the same time, it seems to me that if that's a way to go, that there certainly need to be standards.
Yep.
And just to kind of jump in on a little bit different topic, but along the same way, is we, we don't have any standards. And as smart as everybody in this room is, I don't think there are many people that possess the technical expertise and the experience that us commoners who read books and look on the internet and do all those sorts of things in their research really understand what the world is. You know, I, look, and I built homes for 25 years, and the worst thing about building homes is everybody owns one, right? So, they're all experts on it. And I heard this time and time and time again, although they might not understand that we need hurricane clips here, and we need, you know, extra joists here, and all these sorts of things that come into the conversation. So, this evening, I invited Caleb Barth, who is from, help me out here, Rob.
Baird.
Baird Associates out of Madison, Wisconsin. And I thought it would be important to have somebody available. Caleb's right here. Caleb, counsel, counsel, Caleb. And really, what the thought was, is that, you know, if that's a direction we're going to go in, we're going to need some really good, solid, technical guidance and understand what the universe looks like with these sort of things. And, you know, that's an important part to setting standards, because we can sit here and say, I like five feet, I like six feet, I like 10 feet, I don't want this, I don't want, but it has no validity, except our own personal taste and experience. And I think we need to be informed on the technical aspects, like, John, just what you were saying. You know, what sort of things from an engineering standpoint need to be contemplated, and what sort of things are over-engineered or under-engineered for that, and which things are safe and which things are not safe, which things facilitate the public trust doctrine and make sure that people can pass freely down the lakefront as long as their feet are wet, and what things don't. So, there's a lot of those sort of things. So, we do have somebody kind of in our back pocket, at least if we have questions like that, if we get to those sort of issues this evening. So, Tina, I haven't heard much from you, or Rob for that matter, so.
There we go. Oh, and I got to bring it in here. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Wow, roughly. It occurred to me that we may have a lot of people here tonight that may not understand what a study session is.
Oh.
You know, do you, that we don't, that this is how we study, right? This is how we consider new ideas, talk about them, flush them out. I just want to make sure everybody understands that this is, you know, supposed to be free-flowing. We typically don't have a full room for these sorts of study sessions. So, it's nice to see everybody out here, but just wanted to make sure that people realize what this form is.
You're observing us at the kitchen table is really what it boils down to.
Yeah.
When we're up here, we vote. When we're down here, we debate, talk, and arm wrestle, and do everything else, so that when we get up there, we all understand each other's positions and can make good decisions.
And I wouldn't say legislation is sausage, but I would say, you know, there's a lot of ideas that are expressed and discussed, and it doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to end up in final form, right? So, it's an opportunity to share ideas, thoughts, concerns, and kind of just hash it out. So, I can sense some people are hearing some things that are making them nervous in the, perhaps in the audience, and I just wanted to make sure people understand that this is supposed to, intended to be a collaborative process. And we will hear from the public later as part of the agenda. It just occurred to me, no criticism.
Good call. I mean, I, since we're here so often.
Yeah, I know. You know, I really, well, first of all, thank you for such a thorough and interesting survey of the village code. Really helpful, and I know that took a lot of time. You know, there's a couple of things that I'm just thinking about, and I said it at the last meeting. You know, it used, on one hand, we heard that the Army Corps has changed their processes, right? They've, which is a fabulous thing. I deal with the Army Corps. I work for a developer. I think that's fabulous, right? So, in the greatest time of need, they recognized when lakeshore levels were rising and structures and property values were at risk, the Army Corps changed their processes to make it a more efficient national permit, which doesn't take as much time or much scrutiny, all that. So, to expedite getting those permits approved so people could put in reventments and protect their properties, I thought that was an excellent thing. I mean, rare, right? It doesn't happen much. On the other hand, we heard at the last meeting that one of the key considerations that was part of the old process, more laborious, time-consuming process, was public access. And I, that's, I think, the thing we're trying to struggle with. We're not trying to over-regulate, but there was a key component. So, for many of the people who may own property, lakeshore property, I own lakeshore property in Michigan, so I understand this issue. But, you know, it's not that, there was scrutiny over these structures about public access and how it would affect public access previously. It's only in the last two years or three years, I can't remember. Do you remember, Peter, was it 21? I think it was 21 during the pandemic, where they changed their processes, and all of a sudden, things changed. And so, as a village, a lot of the work-heavy lifting on those issues was done, in my opinion, by the Army Corps or IDNR, whoever, however they allocated the responsibility. And so, now I'm left with thinking, you know, you don't want to be chilling people's, you know, rights, or having people think that you're talking about, you know, harming their property rights. rights. On the other hand, I look at it as just trying to restore some sort of accountability on certain aspects. And that's what I'm kind of thinking about, that there is a gap created by a regulatory change at the federal level. And, you know, if we think about it that way, you know, there's been a lot that, you know, a lot of projects that were approved under that federal permit, taking into account a lot of great projects along the lakefront, taking into account those criteria. So that's one thing I'm thinking about. The other thing, when I just lost my page, it strikes me that there's a lot of definition problems. This is such a lawyer thing, right? There's a lot of definition problems with the code. We've got public spaces, public, you know, like, open space.
Yeah, there's like 10 words used for the same concept.
Yeah. I mean, you've got, you've got public place, public street, which we all know, dedicated right away.
Lake, navigable body of water.
Yeah. And so it just strikes me as, it's a pretty low-hanging fruit, as you said, to just kind of clean up those definitions and create some better certainty. And I find that, you know, working for a developer myself, we may not always like the regulations, but certainty is what people need, right? They want to be able to know that they can make the changes and improvements to their property, and that's really important. So those are just some of my thoughts.
Good points.
First of all, thanks, Danny. I knew all those codes. I just, you know, thanks for pointing mine again. Yeah, I read them nightly. And also, thanks, Chris, for inviting Baird. I think, as much as we all think we know, they have the experts involved. There was an article about California coastline and what people are doing, and it may not be working, which was very interesting to me, I think, just today in the, this weekend in the paper. So I think we're, this is a community that's smart enough to understand we should be on the cutting edge, not on the tail. And if we're cooking our lake, or if we're doing certain things that are, again, safety and welfare of the community, that's something we look at. I've had many calls, as many of you have, from dear friends that live in the lake, and I completely understand their rights. And I think there is some misunderstanding about, we're gonna put in ordinances that will allow people to put volleyball nets and bring their Weber grills down to their properties. Of course not. I mean, as you just said, it's feet wet, it's moving along, and I think we all respect that and want them to be, have a safe environment on their own property, that they can feel very comfortable going there and not being interloped. So I think that's also very, very important. The gaps, I completely agree with our gaps. And what was interesting to me were, and I think it's light-touch gaps, I really do, but I think it's, if I'm, you know, for our own village staff, to keep them guessing of what's, what, somewhere in that gap they have to approve or not approve, I think giving them clearer definition is keeping them out of harm's way and sleepless nights, because this code does not make it really clear. So I think just a little light-touch fill-in can really do wonders, and common sense. I also like the thought about remarkable and unremarkable. I mean, and I think Baird will say the last 20 years, most of this has happened in the last 20 years. I think some of the more remarkable changes to the, and I think, you know, the people that I know on the lakefront have done it right. It's not obstructing the view, it's safe, and there's access, and they're doing it right. But there are some, a few remarkable, and I'm not sure, to be honest, if we had had those gaps, they would be there. And if I'm a homeowner on the lake, and I've had homeowners on the lake call me also and say, my neighbors have put this in, it's affecting my sand, this is ridiculous. So people are being affected already, pro and con, you know. So I think we have to be very careful to protect those people and cover them for something that is remarkable, that's gonna affect their property values in the future. So I think that's mainly it. That's kind of my initial thoughts.
You know, I love the term remarkable and unremarkable, but the bad news is, is that's really a subjective standard. I mean, you know, what may be remarkable to you might be unremarkable to me. And that's where I think, you know, clear-stated standards help, because it leads to help people understand what the box is and what that looks like, and, you know, if there is going to be a box, that it needs to be something that's well-defined and clear, and is not punitive, and most importantly, is nothing that would impair property values. We talk about property rights, but the key issue here is value, and the impairment of value through governmental action. And that's something I think, there's nobody at this table who would ever stand up and say, that's a good idea. So for those folks who are concerned about that, I mean, you know, clearly, I think this group is really more concerned about making sure that value impairment is not part of the equation. Of course, that can be perceived, too. We had a speaker here at the last meeting who, you know, to be realistically, frightened some people. And I've seen this, look, I've been, I hate to say it, I've been in village government for too long, 14 years in elected service here, and I've seen this before, where a couple misplaced words or a misunderstanding and fervor have just triggered a lot of panic and a lot of concern, because it's hard to back that off once it's out there in the ether. And now with the internet and social media, it's even harder to help right the ship and get the truth out there on certain issues. And the one thing I want to make sure everybody here knows is that if you don't think that every person sitting at this table is cognizant and concerned and sympathetic to value impairment, then you don't know this group of people.
Yeah.
Because we're neighbors, just like everybody else in this room, and certainly, we never want to step on our neighbors' investments and compromise in any way, in any way, shape, or form. So, but I think this is interesting, and I guess the bigger question is, is this a general direction that we want to go in? Or do we want to turn over other rocks and?
Well, no pun intended.
Go ahead.
It's open mics, guys, so just go for it.
So, quick question, or quick thought. And I was thinking about this because I was at the plan commission meeting last week, and, you know, we're working on the comp plan, and one of the, which will eventually make its way up here. But, you know, this is, there's the whole, you know, you work on the comprehensive plan, and you've got a work order of kind of laying out for the next almost 10 years. And I just want to highlight that a lot of this stuff, we're maybe accelerating by discussing this, because, you know, part of, anytime you do a comprehensive plan, you go back and you kind of update your zoning code. And I think what we're seeing here, and not just zoning code, but other, you know, codes, we're seeing some of these gaps and things, that these are just regular processes to clean things up, tighten them up, right?
Right.
You know, the internet didn't exist, really. Amazon didn't exist the last time we did a comp plan, you know, for instance, right? So that's that whole process. But, so in my mind is, do, you know, do we want to make it part of the comprehensive plan process? Or do we want to do this kind of, you know, because it's a pressing issue and there's, you know?
That's a good, good point, but sometimes, given the public concern.
I'm not saying we wait, I'm just saying.
And I agree, Tina, you know, because we've shuffled the deck a couple times, you know, sometimes to my personal consternation, but, you know, sometimes we have to address what's important to the public, and then we'll deal with the nitty-gritty, ugly stuff later on. Go ahead, Kim.
Oh, well, I was gonna say, along that line, Tina, I think it's going to be really important that our comp plan this time around has teeth, that I think that if it's, that we have the zoning codes and regulations to back up whatever we all agree is important in the comp plan and what the vision for the community is, which I think we've had a little bit of that gap. Or again, there's just time, the zoning, to your point, hasn't necessarily caught up with sometimes what people want to envision.
Well, just to be really clear, a comprehensive plan, and the professional land planners in the room will probably correct me, but it's a guidance document, right? It's a roadmap for the next 20, 30 years, whatever it is. Then you develop codes and policies to meet those goals. So when you say when you have teeth.
Well, I mean, that, what I don't want to have happen is that we, someone goes, oh, well, that's just the comp plan, that really doesn't count, because we don't have zoning to back it up. And I want to make sure that if we all feel that something in the comp plan is important to the community, we can actually act against it and exercise it.
Yeah. And I'm throwing in a whole other topic that we.
No, but I mean, they do go hand in hand.
But you want to implement your comp plan goals through ordinance changes, and so.
Yeah, and the comp plan is the work plan of the council, really, in a lot of ways, and there's going to be a lot there, and it's not going to happen overnight.
What I'd be really interested, and I'm really glad you have Baird.
Sure.
So we've got Section 12.04.140, that allows us to promulgate standards, rules, and regulations that would address the health, safety, welfare concerns we've been talking about. And from some of the discussion we had with the Army Corps, there is a basic framework here. And that framework has to do with, first, identify the purpose of the project, which you do when you submit to Army Corps. And you have a standard that is, that you will not obstruct sightlines, access, egress, or rescue along the waterfront.
Defined.
Right? And we need help, right? Because I'm just saying stuff. But, so, that the project will not obstruct those things, to the extent it is, does obstruct in some way, that there is some reasonable accommodation, which is actually the term the Army Corps uses, which I thought was funny, because it's kind of an EEOC term, but I get the point, which is, like, if you have to build your, you know, if you're doing a revendment just along the shoreline, it's going to be really hard to pass. And so we're going to need some kind of guidance. What do you do about that? What is a reasonable accommodation? And there may be no reasonable accommodation, but we need to have that. So I would like very much to see some kind of possible standards that we could promulgate with our Director of Engineering into our existing code that addresses and starts providing some real basics along this idea of sightlines, access, egress, and rescue, and accommodations when those things are impaired for some reason. And then, like I said, we do have a variance process. I think the language is horrendous, so we need to, so we get to make it so people understand what it means, so that if, for whatever reason, those standards create a problem, there is a variance process where they come to us, or maybe they go to, like our current process, they go through zoning and then to us. That's fine. That's the basic level, I think, that I'm worried about, is health, safety, welfare. I know there are some concerns about aesthetics. I've heard a lot about, like, concepts that are way above my pay grade, letoral drift. Sorry, Warren, I tried to hang with you and explain a bit. But those are interesting issues. I would view those as, like, good community discussions for the longer term, but let's kind of keep our eye on the ball. Like, what's the immediate concern? I agree with Tina, you know, you said, kind of, there is this urgent thing that happened, there's regulatory change. So let's just focus on that. I think that's what's got people really worried about the immediate thing. I think Baird could provide some technical expertise and guidance to us, maybe some draft standards. I'd like to see those. So that's one thing, draft standards. Second thing would be the cleanup on some of the language, just to wire it better, so people can follow the bouncing ball. The third thing would be, and I think we could do this very easily, just copy and paste, Peter, the concept review process for the One Weneka, for the plan development process, but come up with a process where if people do have big projects at their option, they can come before us. They don't have to, but if you, like, I've got this crazy vision, and everybody might hate me, but maybe they won't. Maybe they think it's genius, right? And so you can present it. And so those are the three things I'd like to see coming out of this. And like I said, the fourth thing might be, you know, longer aesthetic. Frankly, we're not the state of Illinois, there's a whole lot of coordination not happening on the lakefront, looks like a circus, guys, but, you know, we're not going to fix that problem. I mean, it's a spongy lake.
I liked your, so I like that concept, the flyer, the fourth one, because the whole point of the PD process is it gives flexibility. You know, it allows a variance process from larger projects that, you know, that we can perhaps get greater public benefit or whatever. So it creates some flexibility, because the variance standards, and Peter, you can address this probably better, they're kind of codified by state law, right? Or, no?
Everyone just copies everyone.
The less sale.
For homeroom municipalities, they're codified by state law. For, I mean, for non-homeroom.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
For homeroom municipalities, many follow them, but are not required to. You can have your own standards.
Oh, okay.
For variations, particularly if they're standards from building code provisions as opposed to zoning provisions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's just how you build the box, right?
Right.
And aren't we thinking about two things today? One is how do we modify our ordinance or codes as we go forward, but not to stop any projects that might currently be in the process?
That's next for the conversation.
Okay, all right, right.
Timing.
Well, one of the other things that we were presented with last week was a comparison of similar communities that have steep slope ordinances and bluff ordinances. How does that discussion process fit into all of these things we might want to do to our zone?
Throw it on the table.
Any thoughts? For me, the steep slope thing was not the immediate issue that triggered all of this. To be perfectly honest, I wasn't aware that there was a steep slope issue in other communities. We've not had any steep slope collapse in Weneka that I'm aware of. That's not to say it couldn't happen. So I'm not for or against that, I just, for me, it was a little bit of a, yeah, that's interesting, but like, the immediate thing that's got everybody sort of amped up and worried like crazy and.
Well, I think one of the points, again, there's a lot of excellent information here, and I'm not an expert by any means, but one of the, I guess, some communities feel this is an advantage, that the buildable line, property lines that are much clearer, rather than being a moving target of being the normal line, the water line, the high-water line, the normal, and so if we want to get to, you know, a more, a clear process for people, this, I think this is something we should look into, what this would mean for Weneka.
We have that problem. The line is kind of, what do we use, Rob?
Normal water.
Normal water, whatever that is.
So I mean, this does, it does sound, you know, I think one of the communities even has a really nice handout they give, a little glossy handout that says, oh, you own a lakefront property, here are things you need to know. I mean, you know, that sounds sort of trite, but I mean, certainly that is good communication and probably helps simplify anything they want to do.
But you gotta be careful on those steep slopes, one of those diagrams I saw last time. If you start at a toe of the bluff or something, and there's a percentage going up, some of the houses could be out the Sherden Road, and they don't have no, they don't have any buildable lot.
Well, that's why I think it requires some, some study on our part to understand what this would mean and what this could look like or not look like in Weneka.
And my comments in the past have been, we really need to establish, if you've got a lot, what is your water line level? Give it an elevation, so that when your front, your setback is 100 feet, wherever that number is, it's a consistent number.
Yeah.
Whether the water's two feet lower, two feet higher, this is where you start from. So that if someone builds at a high water time, he doesn't have to be further back, or low, he's on the beach.
I think that's, I think that's important that we.
So that was my concern, and also just make sure there's some type of an access across.
But make it clear that we're not talking about changing the property line itself. What we're talking about is establishing a line.
Clarifying.
To.
To be more clear on where you are.
For zoning purposes.
For zoning purposes.
Exactly.
So it has nothing to do with the property purchased or sold or whatever.
That helps and/or should hurt the owners, the property owners.
Yeah, because we've had that normal water, because the stupid thing changes from week to week, so.
You do it 8:00 AM or 2:00 PM.
Yeah, it's almost an unusable standard. So I agree, I would maybe include that in the kind of code cleanup, like, the definition for zoning purposes.
And possibly, is that FEMA map that's got the elevations that changes between some lots, and has the elevation, that might be the number we use, or some number that we don't set, but it's set by someone else.
I'm sure we could get good direction on that. I mean, or at least get a menu of points that we could use to begin to measure from.
Sure.
You know, and Bob said it at the very beginning, there's two issues. There's Lakewood, and then there's, there's up the table land or whatever. I've looked a lot at the steep slopes from the various communities, and we got some information on it before. And you can go from the sublime to the ridiculous, as far as how this whole thing works, from a mathematical model and a visual model. And again, that's why we need, we need help and guidance. I mean, it seems to be responsible to think about it, because we're the outlier right now. And, you know, it doesn't mean that we're going to do anything that changes anything much, but it definitely clarifies that this is where you start from. And I think that's important. But how we establish that, and then all of the things in between there, we can get very prescriptive, or just have some simple dimensions. But I don't know enough to make a determination one way or another, or to say that one's better or the other. But I suspect that with a deeper dive and some good guidance, we could probably find something that achieves the objectives of not compromising property value, and also is responsible in taking care of what's really an important asset, which is our lakeshore, and making sure it doesn't end up continuing to fall into the lake the next time we get a 2019, 2020 stage. I saw you a little upset about something, Rob, on the steep slope?
No, no, I agree.
I mean.
I think, yeah, I think you're right. We are, we are the outlier, and just, but I don't think we need to be, I think we need to just be very thoughtful, not hurt, not hurt anybody, but also just not, to set some guidelines.
And the hard part, I guess, I don't understand, if you have a lakefront property, private property, the steepness of the slope, if their house caves in, it's their engineering that built the house that's responsible for that. I mean, right, I mean.
Spoken like somebody with an E and O policy.
Which is capped, right?
Rather than, obviously, now that you talk about park district, more land, you know, they're responsible for their piece. So the sloppiness, if they want to build expensive retaining walls and step up, that's the individual owner's property rights, probably. What do you want us to do?
But I also think about, you know, that's true, if you're, if you're looking at the steep slope. But I also think about, some of these things are to help clarify the code so it protects people. so it protects people already who live on the lakefront. So they've, you know, they're at a certain setback, somebody could come in and, you know, make an argument about some maybe lack of clarity, build the house, you know, this happens all the time in other part, you know, not so much on the lakefront, but you don't want that situation, which we actually had up in Michigan, where, you know, somebody built closer because the township regulations were not as clear. And so all of a sudden, somebody who's, you know, multimillion-dollar view is completely eclipsed. So I think it also helps, you know, protect property rights, as I think you were saying, Chris.
Yeah, there was one, I think, I may have been on the board here, or maybe on the designer review board or something.
Or values, I should say.
They ended up building so close to the water, because at that time, the water was low. And I questioned at that time, when you've got six and eight-foot waves coming at you, you're going to be hitting your glass windows.
Oh, I remember, that was here.
Right, that was here, maybe, okay. So that's, it's their decision. We can bring it up and direct them and make them rethink it out, but if they want to be that close to the water, within a zoning setback, but then, that's why we need to set an elevation, because at that time, the water was lower, and they were able to get closer.
That's right, I remember that. Yeah.
Where was that?
That was...
Was it approved?
I don't...
It was south of Birrows. Yeah, we approved it, yeah.
It was.
It was like a music room or something.
It was not, it was a gal, yeah, it was, it was an art studio, yeah, yeah.
I thought it was a beautiful project.
Yeah, it was. It was awesome.
There it is. I've never been invited.
I liked it.
Not to single you out, sorry.
We're not throwing you under the bus now.
We're not throwing you under the bus, it's just, but it is a good example for the sorts of things we need to think about.
It's not us to tell you what to do, but to give you the thought that, hey, just in case, think of this, but ultimately, it's your property, so.
Right.
Yeah.
So...
I think, Chris, there seems to be some consensus to follow the cleanup of the code. Maybe get some, some work from Peter and the group, in terms of how to do that best.
Right.
Maybe get some work done on how to fill in some of the specifics, whether it's height, what does vision mean, and public safety, and welfare, and all this, and fill it in, and then come back.
Yeah, I mean...
For something like that. I mean, it seems like that's...
Build a box, right?
Build the box.
And at least start to, and then understand what possible things, you know, where the poison, poison pills are in it.
Right.
And then...
And it'll be, it'll be noticed. It'll be noticed to the public, obviously. More discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
And, and a lot of, and a lot of help, for sure. I mean, this isn't something we're going to dream up overnight.
And refine the process for approval, like how this all comes together.
Like I said, the other community has, you know, here's a flyer. If you live on a lake, this is what you...
It's not the, the final answer, but I mean, it's a little tool.
Right, but it's something like that, exactly.
And, and an independent expert to fill in the gaps that we have no idea about yet.
And potentially advise us on how we review these things, too. So, because if we don't have expertise on staff, you know, how do, how do we make these judgments? So, you know, there's a lot of pieces to fill in. You're right, Bob. And if it's a group where we're comfortable at least starting in that direction, I think, Rob, do you have enough to kind of muddle around and at least ask questions after you get together with staff again?
Right.
And Caleb? Awesome. So, good. All right. The second subject was, you know, I heard it multiple times at the microphone at the last meeting. Is this on?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
No, hold on.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
I think we should just turn the volume up. I hate this thing sticking at me in the face, but, but, you know, we heard it at the podium several times, and I know there's been a lot of offline discussion about this concept of a moratorium. I don't like it, but we got to have, you know, it's out there, people have suggested it, and we have to talk about it, whether we like it or not. So I would like to hear from you guys what your thoughts are, or if there is a desire to even think about moving something in that direction.
I'll tell you, my thought was, it's not necessary. We have the tools in the toolbox. It's not helpful. It'll just end up picking a lot of fights with people we like that we don't need to fight with, because we already have the tools, so what's the point?
Do you have a mic?
I'm almost breathing it, but I, I don't think we, I don't think we need the moratorium. I think we have the tools, which we've talked about. It just seems to send the wrong signal. Pick a fight for the sake of picking a fight when we don't need to.
I, you know, I came into this, Andy, thinking that a moratorium would be a good stopgap, just to fill the timeframe, and I hear what you're saying here. And all I would say is that I think we need to have a process to review permits that come in. You're saying that we have, and I want Peter to confirm this, that we have the tools to require permitting and require standards that would not impair health, safety, and welfare, and all that type of thing. And if we can do that under the existing code provisions that we have, then we probably don't need a moratorium. But I do worry about, from the time now until the time we figure this all out, which, who knows when that will be, what might come down the pike, and we should have a review process that can validate what we're talking about tonight. If we have that, then we don't need a moratorium.
I don't know that we have that specifically up to enforce.
Okay, well, then, we have a, we have a gap here. Peter, how do we fill that gap without a moratorium?
Andy pointed to the provisions, the, oh, sorry. Andy pointed to the provisions. The provision is there. The problem is, we don't have any specific standards for how we issue or how we don't a permit. We have the general authority, it's there, but it just says that it has to be permitted, but then there's no guidelines to direct staff on how to decide which permit to grant or not to grant.
That's a tough one.
We would agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, the way it works, and the way we've actually enforced it, because this has come up, so this isn't academic. If somebody builds something that is a nuisance, then there's that process that I cited. That's the process we end up going through. And you may recall, we went multiple rounds. I ended up spending a lot of time in someone's front yard, you know? And, and it was, it was good, and we had a lot of good discussions. Ultimately, we did have to go forward with enforcement, and we did. So we do have that tool. My, here, I'll be blunt, we've been out in the open with our legal theory, so I don't see any reason to change course now. If, if you're saying we don't have the ability, and we need to do a moratorium, then somebody else who's already got something in the pipeline will say, you're changing the rules, and then they've got their vested right argument. And that is a fight that seems utterly pointless to me, because if we already have the tools in the shed that we have been using, as evidenced by the fence issue just within the last week, as evidenced by the garden situation, then what are we talking about? We don't need a moratorium. We have the tool. But what we do have to do, two things. We have to dial down the temperature, like, big time in the town. It's like crazy. It's just nuts. It's bonkers. It's totally counterproductive. So everyone needs to calm down, and we need to just candidly engage constructively with property owners. I think, despite all of the stuff that's going on, we have well-intended people, very well-intended people, who want to do the right thing for the community that they live in currently, or that they're moving into. And if they don't, we have the tools anyway. So, you know, I think we need to just constructively engage people in good faith. We haven't done that. So for us to cry that, like, we're unhappy with the result, we haven't done a damn thing. We've sort of turtled. So pull the hat out of the turtle, engage with our neighbors, future and present, and sort it out. I have, frankly, I've, I've seen this rodeo before, where everyone's like, you have to do this, or else, and/or you have to do this. And it's totally bogus. That was the tunnel. And so what I've found in this town is, if you engage people, you sort it out.
Yeah, well, I, I think that's, that's a good roadmap, for sure. The question I would have is, if there's a project on the lakefront that is remarkable.
Yeah.
That's not unremarkable, and it comes into our village engineer.
Yep.
For the, the permit comes in. You're saying that we have a review process. We have the ability to review that, to be in accordance with health, welfare, and safety, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, exactly.
But can we administer oversight and jurisdiction of that project in the midst of doing this formal review?
Here's my suggestion. Great question. The permit, the application documents come in, Director of Engineering looks at it, says, this is remarkable in some ways. Then we would call the property owner and say, we want to do a public concept review. You all come in and tell us whatever you think. We listen publicly, everything's out in the public. And if we don't like it, we say, we think this is going to be a nuisance. Okay? And so you can go that route, but you're on notice. We will enforce our rights as we have before. I just think, why pick a fight that you'd...
I, I agree with...
And why start from the perspective of...
Isn't that a little bit different than we heard that sometimes, I think, recently, our engineering department has relied on if the IDNR issues the permit and the Army Corps...
So we would tell them to do it differently.
Now I'm saying, that's what, that's what I was saying earlier, is those should just be pieces of input.
We would have to.
And that, but we have the final oversight and review, which, I think, that is, that is a tweak in what we're doing.
Yeah. So short of a moratorium, Peter, is there something along the lines of what Kim and Andy just talked about, that we could put into place to provide direction to staff review of permits that come before them during the period of time that we are trying to figure this out?
So it can come from three different sources. It can come from the city council, it can come from the village manager, to direct that, that, I mean, Andy's right, that the code says what it says. Whether we've done it before or not, that doesn't prevent us from doing it in the future. So it can be done at the direction of the council or the direction of the village manager, while we're amending the code to make that explicitly clear.
Yeah. If that, if that can happen, I would be, if truly that can happen, I would be okay with just, you know, we don't need to put something in place if we have something, because without the box you're talking about, Chris, and I get remarkable and unremarkable, there's, there needs to be some guidelines to that, no question. I'd say 95% of the stuff on the lake has been great, and no, no problem. As Andy saw when he's kayaking, and I've seen when I'm in a boat, there's some, there's some Disneyland stuff out there, which is pretty amazing. And, but that gap has allowed that to happen. But 99% of it is probably fine. But if we don't have this, I agree, it's going to be, that gap will still, until we get this laid out, that gap will still exist, and things will just, people will still be upset, one way or the other.
Well, maybe I can shine a little light on this, and Andy and I met with Justin Ishbia on Monday. We had a wonderful conversation. And it was clear that Mr. Ishbia wants to be a happy resident of Wenetka. He also understood that, you know, maybe he was overreaching what he wanted, and maybe he was encouraged to do so, I don't know. But we talked about this, and, and he made a couple things very clear. He doesn't want to be any different than anybody else, and all this consternation about planner pockets, and louvers, and trees out into the, into the lake is gone. He shared with us his Army Corps permit, which was, has been awarded this week, which is for an extremely scaled-down version of what most lakefront owners have on their beach, with the, the rock groynes coming out, and only the 125 feet that the Army Corps would permit him. No trees, there's appropriate steps up and over the walls that allow people to exercise their, their rights under the Public Trust Act, and, and, you know, and he basically said to us, hey, you know, if you want to sit down and talk about this, and, and there's things that are, that are troubling to, that aren't punitive, okay? If I'm doing every, the same thing that most of the people on the lake are doing, you know, that's kind of where he would probably be digging in his heels, and rightfully so. You know, I mean, because to legislate and say, well, we put, there's been 10 of these put in in the past five years, and now all of a sudden, yours doesn't work. And I think it would be wrong, and I think it would be shameful for our, for our village council to put a stamp on that sort of activity. But in talking to him, this is a perfect example. He wants to work it out. The guy over on Cherry Street did not want to work it out, and we ended up in court with him. But we have an individual who has got an active building permit in. He's also been working with the agencies that were claiming dominion over this work before we got our nose stuck into it. And, you know, he's rolled this thing way, 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 way back. And I listened to him and thought, this is a genuine individual who just wants to be part of the community like everybody else, you know? And the poor man, because of whatever's been going on on the other side of town, you know, he's been vilified and, and made to, made to be something that he really isn't. You know, he's, he's a fairly, you know, financially substantial person who just wants a cool place to live and enjoy the lakefront, just like many of the people in this room do. And I don't have a problem with that. Now, maybe you guys do, but when somebody asks me for a meeting and says, hey, we want to talk, I'm there. And I think all of us should be there to talk and listen, and try to find the ground that's, that's, that's common and that works. So I don't know what that means in the context of this, but it does, it's been the elephant in the room. Well, and the other elephant in the room is obviously the development of the park district property. And certainly, that will be a public conversation, because there are various permits that we need to issue in order for them to move forward on that. So as a council, we're going to get several bites at the apple if, if people are concerned about things that might be going on, on the elder centennial operation. And certainly, just like with Mr. Ishbia, with the park district, just like we did on, on the west side of town, is we'll sit down and work it out, you know, and do it in the best interest of the public, and do it out here, right at this table, where everybody can see what we're up to, and add your input as we go, which is the most important part of this thing. Just because we're all at the table doesn't mean the conversation doesn't extend out into the room, because certainly it does. We're all, we're all members of this community. So, to me, that was a bit of good news, because it seemed to break, break the logjam a little bit, and hearing the man say directly to us, I just want to live in peace and be a good neighbor. And if I can leave something good behind in my dealings with others, then I'll do it. If I can't, then I won't. And I walked away saying, you know, I almost felt embarrassed to a certain degree, because, you know, we've all been hearing whispers and behind-the-scenes stuff, and, you know, pictures and diagrams and all this stuff. And, you know, look at, he's just a guy who wants to build a house in, in town and, and cohabitate. And he's under, he understands the issues that have been brought forward by many people in the community, and he's responded to them. If you look at that plan, and luckily, I do have a little technical competence, I will tell you, it's unremarkable. Now, somebody else may have a different standard for it, but I look at it and say, I don't see anything different than I see on 10 houses down on the lakefront that I have observed. So, and by the way, I'm not for the, for any sort of moratorium under any condition, so. But I'm a real estate guy, so I would never be for that.
And I, Chris, I agree. I had never, he came up and said hi to us after the platter. I'd never met him before, never talked to him before. Your description, I think, is exactly what I would expect from any lakefront property owner, which is, just tell me what you want, right? Don't, don't change the rules, don't, you know, don't make me look like a jerk. Just give me some clear guidance, and I just want to do what everybody else is doing, go about my business. That's kind of what we ought to be doing. And that's different from, now, there's a park, there's a lot of things going on. Like, like Chris said, there's the park district thing, that's a different thing, that's, right? And there's the stormwater issue, that's on us, right? It's not Warren's fault the water is polluted. It's us, okay? So, you know, we got these different buckets, we got to, we don't want to conflate all the crap. We got to focus on each thing and treat them fairly. But I, I agree with you 100%, Chris, I, you know...
And it was a good conversation, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, treat them fairly and...
We agree. I agree. I mean, as you know, I've had those, the conversations with him as well, at his request. And I do think we're getting to that point where you're saying that he wants to live, but I do, this is why this, this town's so remarkable. I mean, it didn't get there on its own. It got there because there are a lot of people that were protecting our lakefront as well. So... So, it just didn't happen by chance.
I agree.
So, I give those people a hell of a lot of credit too, but I give them credit for saying, kind of realizing, you know what? This is the way Weneka is and the way... Why I'm moving here, hopefully.
The interesting change in this whole thing was before it was going to be, "This is ours." Now, his position has shifted as we would expect any property owner. What's mine is mine. What's yours is yours. And that's the approach he took, which I think is appropriate. And, you know, by bifurcating this whole thing, saying, "This is mine. What you guys do is yours," it really changes the whole discussion and the tone of it, especially when you see the reductions that have been made. So... And I'm not saying I'm for the project or against the project. I'm just saying, "This is what I saw and this is what I heard." And I like to think I'm a pretty good judge of people's character and honesty and... I didn't think he was BSing me.
No, no. And I would say the same thing for our Park District friends. We worked very closely with them to make the stormwater thing happen. And if it wasn't for Warren taking a look at that project and saying, "You know, there's an opportunity here to do something extraordinary." Like that whole golf course thing, that's Warren's idea, right? Like that... The community savings are massive. What we're doing to make our rivers cleaner, it really is owing to Warren. I was really annoyed with him at the time.
Me too.
But he was right. And so, I have no doubt that we have the right people at the Park District when it comes to that component. And we will have disagreements, but we will have them in public and we will listen. And we'll treat people fairly. That's all we can do.
Yep.
So... I'll add, it's unfortunate how we got here, but we're also fortunate of how all the residents came to the party.
Yeah.
And we were getting to that finish point. And I know there was a talk at the last meeting that, well, there was no public hearing with IDNR or somebody. Well, here it is. And the whole process with the Park District going through it and the people coming and seeing the wall and all that, it all works out. So, we have all the stuff in place. And as far as the permit process goes, it's almost like the building permit. I think at any time, we can hire an outside consultant to review building permits like we do now. Can't part of this process be, "Hey, you know, we're going to hire Caleb or someone as a second set of eyes on this process and oversee it also, maybe?"
If we feel we're over our skis, that might be the right thing.
Right, right? And it just kind of happened. It can happen right away, maybe. I'm not sure what the cost is or anything, but typically even on commercial building permits, it goes pass through. Not that I want to waste money for anybody, but that could be a way to help the residents feel more comfortable that it is being done correctly and being tracked during construction.
And it's not arbitrary.
Right. With an expert.
Add your point of, "If we had those gaps filled that you and Kim and Bob were talking about, we might have saved this village a year of consternation because it wouldn't even be considered."
Well, you don't know that.
Right.
It still could have been submitted that way.
It could have been submitted.
For permits and then...
Yeah.
Then it comes out to public. So, however we got there, we got there. May not be the most pleasant, but hopefully, it's a more pleasant finish.
So, where are we at with this?
Yeah, I'm no moratorium, no moratorium.
Yeah. And I've been on record. Moratoriums, because I deal with them, right? And I don't even think Arlington Heights is putting a moratorium in place as they are building the plane to build the Bears Stadium, right? I mean, they're really extreme measures and I think they can end up taking years, right? And it just creates more division in a community. If I thought we didn't have a framework, I would say, "Yeah, maybe we should take a pause and try and figure this out." But I think we've got a great framework already, especially given the unique nature of Weneka and the fact that we are chartered, you know? Our charter is different and that gives us more jurisdiction. I think I'm not in favor of moratorium, very rarely.
So, does anybody want to push the issue? Does anybody want to push the issue? The moratorium issue?
No. I think we have a solution.
Okay.
That keeps us going.
I just wanted to make it clear because it was a big issue in the public and the conversation was all over the place.
And we got to a good point.
You know, uncomfortable as it may be sometimes, we got to clear the air on this stuff.
I was ignorant to that whole discussion, so I don't know.
I think we have...
Ignorance is bliss.
I'll forward my phone to you for a week.
Okay.
I think...
Especially after your surgery.
I think with filling this gap, as you guys just talked about, we have a good path forward without it.
Great. Well, I think we have a good work plan here. Everybody comfortable with kind of where we're going? And look, it's going to crystallize as we go forward. There's probably 20 things that we haven't thought of yet, but as we go through the process, we'll understand that and hopefully, we can do it, you know, expeditiously. And everybody needs... And everybody out in the audience needs to understand that, you know, we're volunteers and we put a lot of time in just in normal times. If we were full time, we could probably roll up our sleeves and have this done in two weeks, right? But we just don't have that kind of bandwidth as volunteer, you know, servants for the community. So, we'll try to fit it in. The rest of the things on our agenda for this year can't stop, so we're going to be slotting it in or maybe having special meetings. Special meetings seem to work because at least people know they're coming out for one thing, not listening as buying pipes and paying for wire, right? I mean, you guys can come out for that too, but trust me, I have a hard time staying awake sometimes on those two.
And we've got some good things on the horizon.
You know, Chris, I was just going to say, and I, again, at least from my perspective, and I know the elephant in the room prompted this conversation, what was going on, but I never felt this was about one property owner.
No.
One project. I feel like this village council has addressed sort of long-term structural issues in this community, whether it be stormwater, whether it be water mains, 100-year plan for water mains. To me, this is simply getting things set up for the long-term future. And Ishbia, you know what? He's got his plans going. Whatever... You know, hopefully, he'll be a good neighbor. That's great. I hope the Park District plan turns out as everyone would like it to turn out. But this is... This transcends those, at least in my opinion.
Even though they were the...
They were the catalyst. They were the catalyst. I get it.
And we learned a lot.
Well, yeah. I mean, each project brings new things to the table that we may not have known. But one thing I want to do is for the people in the audience is to plug our website because there's so much information on the website about upcoming meetings and things, as well as the e-news, right? Which kind of gives... Do you want to give a plug for that?
Sure. Subscribe for it. It'll give you all the events that are going on in town, the calendar of meetings. We also cross-reference our calendar with other units of government, the chamber, all the other community organizations in town.
Yeah.
And there's some fun stuff on there. It's not all just boring government stuff.
No.
It's worthwhile signing up if you don't get them.
Yes, right.
I'm sorry.
All right, well...
Let me just...
Oh, no. Peter had something to...
Just to set expectations, what we've talked about tonight is there's a bunch of different pieces to it, so it's not going to come to you all in one big ordinance. Some of it will come sooner than other. Like the permit stuff, I think we need some guidelines imposed pretty quickly. So, that'll be... The steep slope and the other stuff, I think, will be longer. So, just didn't want you all to think that we're going to, that one, we're going to do it all in two weeks or that we're going to do it all in a year. It's going to be different steps.
Sounds good.
How long did it take you to do the memo?
Over the holidays.
It's a sore spot. It was all fine.
Okay. Well, now we have the time of the evening where we get to hear from all the folks in the room that have taken time out of their lives to come out and listen and hopefully share. I'm really bad at this, so what I'm just going to do is call the first row, second row, third row, and then maybe you can come and line up and then we can kind of go that way because for me to go left, right, left, right, gets really confusing. So...
Test.
All right, we're good to go. So, would anybody in the first row like to share your thoughts with village council? We're all neighbors here. It's okay.
Said he wasn't going to talk.
You're not even a resident anymore, so...
Or former neighbors. Evening, residents, members of the council. My name is Hal Frank, a former 25-year resident of Weneka, recently left the lovely village at the end of last year and moved a little bit further north to be your grandchildren... Or closer, I should say. I am here before you on behalf of a number of the landowners along the lake who are interested in this discussion, obviously, and the next step you'll take. Some of them are here this evening, some are not. I appreciate everything that you're doing and talking about this evening and the opportunity and the fact that you have these study sessions, which I appreciate often are not as well-attended. I just have one question about the direction that you're... And I'd just like to have you talk about where you'll go from here in terms of what comes out of this review and potential different ordinances, provisions or regulations or whatever. As I understand it, you're giving the village staff and the village attorney direction to look at the code and see where things might change or be improved or... And that can obviously cut both ways. What do you envision as the process for keeping folks like my clients involved in that? In other words, are we going to wait and see what gets posted on the website as an agenda packet for another study session? And then we come in and share our thoughts with you? Or will there be some kind of process where the village attorney has authority to share with whoever signs up and says they want to see it in advance? You know, drafts of provisions so that when you do get together, assuming you do do other study sessions, that there's more meat on the bone and more productive discussion at that study session that involves the public? Or as Peter said, eventually, if it does evolve into the adoption of a new ordinance or some new amendments to ordinances, are we just going to have to wait till there's the legally required public hearing and then comment? That's my question.
What we'll... And I just tapped Rob on the shoulder here. I think we'll figure out a way to reach out to the community and say, "If you're interested in our conversations on the lakefront, sign up for..." Maybe just to receive correspondence and notification on those sort of things. And after that, then, you know, we can say that the next study session, the village council will be reviewing ordinance modifications proposed by the village attorney. Or maybe it's, you know, we're going to be talking to Baird about, you know, what this... The initial box looks like, if there is a box, and those sort of things. I don't know how else to do it, Al, to be honest with you, because, look, a month ago, I had a whole different plan for January's conversations in this room and none of them included the lakefront. So, things can change quickly and, you know, we have to be able as a group to respond to that. And just... But I don't think it's incumbent on the village attorney to start notifying interested parties whenever we're going to talk about this. So, some of it's going to be the responsibility of the resident or the representatives to stay in touch and just try to understand. And we'll try to make it easier. Go ahead, Rob.
I was just going to say, our normal e-news subscription could be part of it, but then we could also send out special notifications just on the lakefront that isn't, you know, solely dedicated to that subject matter with as much notice as possible.
Right. And I appreciate that the processes are obviously yours. They are and they will be yours. I'm asking a little more fine-tuned about being able to see drafts of what's being circulated to council members before, you know, a week before or something so that when you do have your next discussion, it's more productive because you've actually, you know, received input from folks like me.
That's tough because we get the stuff on Friday night for a Tuesday meeting, us at the table. So, to expect...
Ordinances are always introduced.
Right. I mean...
Before they're adopted.
It would be really difficult because staff is working to the 11th hour to have these packets ready to publish online and to us. So, a lot of times, we don't even know what we're going to see until Friday night.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else in the first row? Okay, we'll move back to the second row.
Hello, Rob. John Oberston. I live at 301 Sheridan on the north boundary of Elder Park. And I have a couple of thoughts. And one of the comments earlier was how everybody got so excited so quickly. And having been in jobs running large public companies, I know that communication is important. I hope the village council has learned that it is as well. When we hear that there's going to be a meeting about regulating our properties, three days before the meeting is beginning to happen, is going to happen, it's hard not to be suspicious. So, I just want to say that let's be open. I think we're all calmed down a lot compared to where we were. But when we hear that, it's very discouraging. I have been to nearly every park district meeting for the last three years, so I know things have gotten whipped up a little bit. But I do want you to think about, so when I bought in '05 and we rebuilt, we went through the Weneka Preservation Commission, and they had a chance to visit my house before it was torn down and it was built. And I found out that one of the members voted against every tear down, no matter what. She didn't come to look at the house. And so, put yourself on that window looking into the village occasionally. I think it would be helpful. Second, having been the president of United Airlines when the last major airport was built and opened in the United States, and having worked with numerous government agencies in my career to widen runways, to lengthen runways, I hope that if you join in with the Department of Natural Resources and the Army Corps of Engineers, that you do it in parallel, not in series. Let's not lengthen this process. It took me forever to get the building permits to do what I did. So, I'm hoping that you can do this at the same time it's going on in other places. And finally, Chris, thank you for being willing to meet with Justin because that was not true of all elected officials of this community. And I was really disappointed by the way that happened before, so I appreciate it very much. He's a good guy. You know, the family made it all. There's, you know, he's worked hard. I think he's going to be a good neighbor. And two of his neighbors are here. Now, I'll have a thousand-foot park, hopefully, between my house and his house. But Scott and Nancy are going to live right next door to him. So, thank you very much for taking the time to go visit with him. I think that was important to do. Thanks.
Thanks for coming out tonight. Second row. Last call for the second row. We'll go to the third row. Christine, Christina, come on up.
Okay.
I just wanted to express my thanks because I think for our mission at the Park District, it's been enormously helpful to have the information that was conveyed on January 10th, which started at a very different level with experts explaining some very basic concepts to us over in lake land, like management land. And it was enormously helpful. So, I want to thank you for January 10th. I want to thank you for tonight because I think it's also been informative for us to learn more about the municipal codes that govern this process. And that's also bringing us all together to hear your thoughts and your work. I want to thank Andy Kreip for stopping by our open house on January 21st. Just like your group of trustees and your staff, we did a lot of work over Christmas because we had nothing else to do. So, we put together 36 giant boards. The permit plans were up there, the ones that were discussed tonight. So, I think that if you want to check out our website, you can take a look at those permits and see what they actually look like because I think it's always helpful to take a look at that. And then I think looking at your website, looking at our website and sharing that information is always going to be the most constructive process. So, I thank you for your time. I thank you for your energy. I thank you for your support. I'm personally grateful for Warren. Enormous energy, enormous knowledge, enormous persistence, and it's got us...
I feel like we're giving his eulogy.
Yes.
Kind of ominous.
No, I said I am grateful. Yeah, I am grateful for him. Yeah, I am grateful for him. You know, it's a, it's a strong effort that he has put forward, and I think it's going to move us to the right direction. So, I just wanted to say that. His name came up a bunch of times, and I wanted to say, thanks for coming to the open house, and also, thanks for recognizing his contribution in stormwater, which is enormous.
Thanks, Christina. Okay, anybody else in, I mean, the third row? Warren, come on up. Three minutes, Warren.
He gets another minute for every time his name is mentioned.
It's not customary for the corpse to speak at his own funeral.
Yeah. Oh, Andy. Now, Andy, you took, you took my name, what, four, five, six times, so I figure I get a few extra minutes. So, for those of you who don't know me...
It's like Beetlejuice.
My name is Warren James. I moved to Winnetka at the ripe old age of 10, big move from Will Met, right? So, I've been around this area my entire life. Bob, you and I have known each other pretty much our lives. Rob, 20-plus years. Peter, yeah. I know a lot of faces. Andy, we did work together quite successfully. Chris, you know I have enormous respect for you, because this is a man that has persevered and actually gotten things done. I think our community owes a great debt of gratitude, Chris Rince, to seeing the things through. I too am a developer. I'm an engineer by education, a developer by profession. I'm a licensed managing broker in the state of Illinois. I had the invitation to come and be interviewed in 2014 to serve on the Lakefront Advisory Committee. I was selected, and I wound up serving as the coacher of the Lakefront Master Plan with Joe Dooley. There were 10 of us, each from different backgrounds, different capabilities, and over a year's time, we developed that plan and submitted it to the park district. Much like the village's comprehensive plan, the Lakefront Master Plan is a guiding document, is something of significance. It took $140,000, many experts, Baird was engaged as part of it, as was Shabika and Lakota and other civil engineers, so it is a document. If you have not studied it, I think you owe it to yourself to do so. There were a lot, a lot of great thinking behind that. We set about, I was, I was invited by the caucus to join the board, so I did so willingly, knowing that one of my missions was to help implement this Lakefront Master Plan. So, I've served since 2017 on your park district board, and I'm in my second year as president, with two more years to go. So, you haven't seen the last of me. There's some bigger picture issues here, and I think that I want to put a few of them on the table for this board to discuss, because, I don't know if you know, but Illinois has the unique distinction of having more municipalities than any other state in the union. Over 7,000 municipal corporations. Why the park district is in the park department and we're a separate unit of government, solved a lot of problems. Rob, Chris, Rob Bayhan and I have discussed that at length, and we've looked at the possibilities of that. There are legal complexities that make it extraordinarily difficult, and so, we proceed. We're a separate unit of government. Excuse me. You spoke of pollution, discharge into the lake. There was a very formal process that went through. The village engineers signed off on a permit application last year to reroute the stormwater pipe. It's a 75-year-old discharge, it's falling apart, it's unsafe, needs to be replaced. We voted on October 27th to move forward with that plan, and we expect and trust and hope that the village, acknowledging that they've already signed off on that permit application once, will do so again, so we can move forthwith to make that improvement and open Elder. Elder's been closed because it's been unsafe since 2020. Learned a lot. Thank you. Thank you. Learned a lot from the Army Corps of Engineers and the IDNR. I learned about eight years ago. And respectfully, there is so much to understand about the lake. I would, happy to engage with you and share with you. You guys have a lot on your plate. I've worked on this issue for going on nine years. I have a body of knowledge that is rivaled by Shabika, Charlie Shabika, but there's a lot to understand, public safety being one of them. There was no permit required at Lloyd, so I respect the village's ability to require permit, but it's not been uniformly enforced. So, if there is going to be a permit process, we'd like very much to know what that permit process is going to look like. You mentioned avoiding litigation. I think it is public knowledge that we entered into an agreement with Mr. Ishviah in October of 2020. We broke off negotiations in April of '21, and we avoided litigation, because we realized that litigation was not helpful to either party. And it took us a very long time, and over that very long time, Mr. Ishviah capitulated on a lot of issues. But we agreed to proceed through a permit process with the louvers and the vegetation with the expressed knowledge that it had to go through the public comment period. We knew that. We decided, okay, we'll proceed with that. I had fully expected, and in fact, in April '21, commented on that. So, I think it's only fair to know that we too have sought to avoid litigation and maintain good neighborly relations. We didn't always agree, in fact, we disagreed quite fervently on a lot of issues, but over the past two years, this has come to this point. Now, Mr. Ishviah has capitulated on virtually every one of his prior demands, and I think that's great, and I think you're very earnest about being good neighbors, and I think we should work together. I do want to ask, okay, I want a distinction between public and private, and I want the board to consider something that David Schoen and Chris Rince and I have discussed as well. Every public space, you have a school, a church, a park, AC Nielsen Salzone Residential. This community could avoid a lot of consternation if we move forward with the comprehensive master plan and adopt proper zoning for parks, open spaces, institutions. You would have had to bite of the apple much sooner if Centennial was already zoned a park, you would have to go through a rezoning process. Instead, it was zoned R2, didn't require that. So, we, you know, as a developer, being 35 years in land use, I have a lot of thoughts to share, a lot of ideas, a lot of ways to help make this community better. It has always been my goal to make this community better, and I believe the Lakefront Master Plan, in its creation, is very thoughtful in providing greater public access.
Seven minutes, Warren.
Always been our goal. Look forward to working with you, would invite you to attend our meetings, sent you all a bunch of information. Call me. Happy to go through it. There's a lot here, a lot to understand, look forward to working together towards a solution. Thank you. Appreciate the extra time.
Okay. Anybody else in the third row?
Good evening. I'm Jim Rao, I live on Fuller Lane, across the street from Centennial Park. Thank you for this chance to address you and for the second study session, and we are very pleased to hear about your very constructive conversation with Justin Ishviah. I have to laugh a little bit. We, Judy and I started attending the park district's meetings last May, when at an open house, the park commissioners and the executive director were trying to sell us on the tremendous advantages of the louvers and park, planter pockets, and how awesome that will be for the village of Winnetka, so I'm glad that we've moved off of that. Hasn't been easy to, for so many members of the community to try to change minds on that, and I'm glad Justin has changed his mind as well. I know that it's challenging for you to wade, wade into this important issue, and I appreciate the fact that you're doing so. And the village has a critical role to play in that you represent all of Winnetka's residents on key issues. And so, I want to talk a little bit more about Elder and Centennial. The Census Bureau says that we have about 4,300 households in Winnetka, and based on Winnetka Park District's current plan for Elder and Centennial, the 200 owners of dogs who have permits to use the park are probably very happy with that.
Mr. Rao, I'm, I'm really sorry, but we're not here to talk about park district matters this evening.
I hope that as you get moving forward on your lakefront plan, that you will take a chance to survey Winnetka residents on, you know, their issues, because I think that the 4,000 households probably have some important perspectives to offer. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the third row? Okay, we'll move back to the fourth row, which is where I start to lose it, so, anybody, anywhere in the fourth row, would you like to share your thoughts with us?
I'm sure. I, I know this isn't working very well. For, for some of us, you know, in the back, it was very difficult to hear some of you speak, but my name is Susie Schreiber, and I was a former park district commissioner in Winnetka. But the last time at your meeting, I pointed, I shared with you that the Lake Michigan Lakewide Management Plan for the Illinois shoreline was completed, and I just wanted to let you know that I do have a copy here, but I was at the Winnetka Public Library, and this is for everybody here, to the reference desk, and they are making a copy available of it in a binder and hard copy, because sometimes it's easier to just look at something like that. And this is a plan that was, began formulation in iterations in the mid-1990s, but under the Great Lakes Restoration Act in 2019 to present, to 2022. It was completed under Lake County Stormwater Management, because the headwaters are up there, and they flow into, from Lake to Cook County. And they've done an excellent job, and I would suggest that if people want to understand ravines and slope and shoreline stabilization, that just having a quick look at this would be beneficial. And I believe you referenced that there was that subset that one of the villages to the north in Lake County had put together. I didn't give them that, but that, I believe, was done by Lake Forest Open Lands, and it really is a helpful homeowner's guide. So, thank you for bringing that up, and thank you all for the process which you're going through. It's hard, but it's really worth it, and good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Schreiber. Actually, we're going to, can we see if we can get a copy of that, Rob, and maybe get it up on the website?
It would be helpful.
Sure. It's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Chris.
All right. That same row, anybody else? Scott, what row are you in? I can't count. Okay. Let's move back to the fifth row. Anybody in the fifth row like to speak? Just come on up. I mean, no reason to, okay, nobody there? The next row, come on up.
Good evening. My name's David Stevens. I live at 333 Sheridan Road, just a couple of doors north of the proposed merger of Elder and Centennial. I think a lot of people are here tonight interested in this issue, because of what, Chris, you mentioned, the elephant in the room. And it seems like there has been a real sea change within the last 30 days on the position as I felt like I've been to battle to try and protect the rights of the citizens of Winnetka to preserve the lakeshore for public access. I'm encouraged by the stance, but forgive me if I have a very healthy dose of skepticism, that we are really at a point where we can just rubber stamp this and go forward. So, if I can give the trustees any advice, it would be to proceed very carefully. It's nice to know that we have a framework in place that could lend itself to that, but I don't feel yet comfortable with the fact that we are completely on the right path to get done what we need to do and preserve the lakeshore for all of the people of Winnetka. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. That row? The next row? Anybody sitting in the benches? Okay, now we're going to go to the back room.
So, my name's Katie Stevens. I'm married to David. And I am probably the most passionate person about the village in the past 40 years. I want you to know that the stormwater tunnel, the stormwater was originally to go east into the lake, and we were the ones that were stewards of the lake, to say it can't go into the lake, and Chris took the ball and ran with it, and so did the village council, and I thank you for that. It's been a long process, but it was worth the wait, and it was done well, and it was done properly with all the different jurisdictions. Everything I've done with this village has been to make this village better. We have worked on trying to buy the property at 261 Sheridan. We also tried to keep the park district from putting the maintenance shed in the middle of the par three golf course and cutting down 300 trees. And we worked to save Dwyer Park from condominiums and a Trader Joe's. We've had countless meetings, and I'm only telling you that because that's my passion. You probably also remember that I brought in two 10-foot stakes, because that's all that could fit through the doors, with something that would show you the visual of what, an 11-foot wall. Ooh, can I do that? I'm singing. Okay. One, I just want you to know that it appears that my biggest passion is the lake. I kayak, I boat, almost every day that I can, and it appears daily that everyone that has built a new or remodeled house, and not everyone, most everyone, has, after approval, built walls on their properties or have taken liberties blocking access and even building into the lake. I have a lot of friends here that live on the lake that have followed the rules, have low walls, and you can see everywhere, and they, you can walk over their walls. You have the ability to be stewards of the lake. You have the jurisdiction, three and a half miles into the lake, not a half mile, and you have the right to exercise that three and a half miles. We need the village to work on behalf of the 4,200 households, and these are the things I'm asking for, because my mom always said you have to be specific. We want public access, we want preservation of the views, we want enforcement of egregious, unpermitted properties. We want leadership from the village trustees, which you're showing, since IDNR appears not to be handling the enforcement, it's up to you. We want no motorized vehicles within 200 feet of a swimming beach. Remember the poles that I put up? If you have an 11-foot wall and someone swims out, takes a kayak out, or takes a boat out within 200 feet, Kennelworth has enforced this twice, you can look at that, but it is a hazard, and I promise you, some little 15-year-old's going to die, or younger. No private marinas and no boat launches on the beach. To my knowledge, there's only one boat launch that's been permitted. They're, they prevent access to a beach, they're hazardous if you want to go on a winter walk. And I also want you to protect our property values, not just all the lakefront homeowners, but all of the public values. I live one off the lake. We need to take our village and our lakefront back and do the right thing. You know, I, I have a little bit of a thing about this Athenian oath in the room, leave it better than you found it. And I will tell you, I, you know, I commend Warren, he's a volunteer, I commend you all, you're volunteers, but as I said at the last meeting, not the, not the one three weeks ago, but before that, you know, this project has come in hot. It has spent a million dollars, the park district's money, and it has taken two and a half years. So, I commend you immensely for approaching this from a collaborative effort perspective. And please understand that 11-foot, 11-foot walls and blocking access, all of that, Jim Kay, James Casey said, have to be removed if they were not permitted by the IDNR. And so, you need to know that you have the opportunity to enforce these laws as well, and remove things that are currently improperly there. And I love this village, please protect it.
Thanks, Katie.
And somebody left their notes, so I'm going to read them really carefully. And, and one last funny thing, I, you know, you talked about spaceships, you might want to look at that.
We're going to go over to the right side of the room. Anybody on the wall over there want to, want to share their thoughts? Seeing none, we'll go over to the left side of the room. Anybody on, on that wall want to share your thoughts with us? Come on up.
I will stop before I should come up. I'm Steve Juliuson, and I live in Hubbard Woods on Asbury. After all this hubbub, and by the way, thanks, Andy, it was really great, and everybody's done a great job, but especially you. I think the main thing to remember about all this is that the Winnetka Park District is subordinate to the village as far as the jurisdiction over the lake, and I think that's what got lost. I don't think they understood this at the time, and they spent over a million dollars on studies that aren't even relevant now, which is a tremendous waste of money, taxpayer money. And they also, when they were doing this, they didn't share the information with the public and even people on their own board, which is, you know, insane. So, I would think you should consider how you control the Park District when they come to you in the future, to keep this from ever happening again, because this whole soap opera happened because they lost sight of what, where they were in the food chain. Finally, I would say, if you're going to do a study on the lake, you might want to also have a coastal engineer, because they would know all about. Is that what you do? Okay. I didn't hear it back there, I couldn't hear very well, so, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else? That was awesome. Thank you, everybody. Okay, I don't have a schedule for future meetings. Obviously, Peter and his team and staff is going to go back and begin to work on some of the things we've discussed this evening. Please watch the website, we'll figure out a way to get you folks signed up, so you can be in the, in the, in the loop, and we will take it from there. So, I think we're done, right?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We're adjourned.